All right, you're all set, Andrew.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Orange Board of Education meeting to order on Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven oh one. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. I'm sure you all know, but I'll bring it to your attention. This will be Mr. Vitale's last meeting. He will be leaving us, so I will ask him to read the mission statement.
The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Do we have any public participate, public participation? No? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Vitale.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so my last meeting, I'm feeling a little nostalgic. I feel very loud on this microphone, too. Am I, am I too loud for you? Okay. So I just wanted to share with you some thoughts on my, some quick thoughts on my last board meeting. Ten years ago, my family moved to Orange in large part because of the school system. My introduction to the Greater Orange Public School System was on my son's first day of kindergarten, where I was amazed to see what seemed more to me like a Hollywood red carpet event than a kindergarten, complete with cameras and shouting fans and waves to the crowd from the celebrated new crop of kindergarteners as they got off the bus. The involvement of the parents in this town is amazing and makes all the difference. You show up. You show up for the kids. A few years later, I started on the board, my first elected position, and so I didn't know what to expect. What immediately struck me about this board is that there was never any time wasted on national political hot topics or any of the types of political obstinacy and polarization that is everywhere in our country today. The focus has always been on the kids, and I believe this is a model for how people may want to behave. It should be no secret that our school system is the crown jewel of the community and a major reason why Orange is such a desirable town to raise a family. People of Orange should make no mistake, investing in the school system is really investing in your own home. Look at your property values. Among the things I'm proud of, to have been a small part of during my four years on the board, is handling of COVID, return to school, the masking debate, increased safety for our kids, and always responsible budgeting. I can take no personal credit for this, but proud of what a small group of individuals can accomplish. I did, however, I am, however, proud of the fact that I did show up. I took the liberty, because obviously I have nothing much to do, of reviewing all the matters of pub, public record, the meetings, Board of Ed meetings, committee meetings, and workshops that I was invited to over the last four years, a hundred and five, and I made it to ninety-five of them. And that's just the ones that were a matter of public record, a few, many I attended on, on my own. Save for a couple of surgeries, some family commitments, and that pesky full-time job, I've made it to all of them. Anyway, I encourage everyone to show up. There was no public participation today, but I encourage everyone to be involved and continue to show up. Decisions are made by those who show up. It's been my great pleasure as a resident and a parent to serve and always listen to the parents, the taxpayers, and the children of our town. I'll continue to coach and be active in the community, and I thank you for my chance to be a part of it. Further, I'd like to thank my fellow board members, Dr. Scarpetti and his amazing staff, and everyone who works towards making Orange School experience what it is every day. Together, we will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. We will move on to the consent agenda. I will be looking for a motion to accept the first item under the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion? Carmen, second. Susan, any discussion? All in favor? Post? Abstain? Very good. Thank you. This evening, we have a presentation. Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to present important technology services, resources, and updates for those in attendance and at home. The members of the Technology Services Team work tirelessly to support summer initiatives, as well as in-school support for staff, students, and their parents or guardians. To ensure issues are handled accordingly, please send an email to techsupport@orange-ed.org, where a ticket is generated automatically. Our team of technology specialists will see the ticket and contact you as soon as possible by email or phone. I'd like to take some time to walk through our website, as it is a useful resource for new and returning parents and guardians. You can visit the website by going to www.oesss.org from any web browser on a computer or mobile device. Our district website follows the federal guidelines from the Americans with Disabilities Act, which requires us to have eye-friendly colors, certain style fonts, and captioning of texts and links throughout the website. There is a language translation tool that is embedded into the district website. You'll find it, you'll find that it is located at the top right corner of the website. The tool is provided by Google and offers over a hundred and thirty languages. What's nice about this tool is, once you change the language, it follows throughout the entire website. The Orange District has many families who primarily speak a different language, and hopefully they find this tool helpful. Navigating through any website for information can be difficult. For this reason, we have a webpage for our families called Family Resources. The shortcut to the Family Resources webpage is located at the top of every webpage throughout the site. On the Family Resources page, you'll find links to commonly visited webpages. Clicking on the Popular Forms link will bring families to the webpage that contains access to forms such as online absence forms, insurance forms, and many others. We take our students' privacy seriously, and although we share very limited data in general, we're required to share a list of online vendors who have entered into an agreement to abide by the Public Act sixteen dash one eighty-nine. We also display a list of those vendors who were requested but not approved. Parents may click on the Data Privacy link on the Family Resources page. Another link is our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school calendar. We keep the district calendar updated throughout the school year and made publicly available to the Orange community. We've embedded the school calendar directly into the Family Resources page. By scrolling down the page, you'll be able to view the complete current school year calendar. You may also choose to click on the link directly so that you can print if needed. Power School Portal is also another important link. Parents or guardians should visit this webpage throughout the school year. The Power School Portal allows parents and guardians to communicate important information or make changes that will be communicated to the main office staff of their children's school. Your children's school will also communicate important information to the parent or guardians with updates on grades, attendance, lunch balances, and more. This slide shows what the Power School Portal looks like when a parent or guardian is signed in. If there is more than one child, you can toggle between them in the top-left section of the page. On the left menu, there is a button called Forms, and when you click on it, you'll be presented with forms requiring verification or sign-offs. To open the form, just click on the title. Once the form is open, you can begin to fill out or update the information of the form. It's important to know that the form, Student Policy Agreements and Photo Permissions, does come with a due date to verify that you have read the Parent-Student Handbook and Internet Use Agreements with your child. This form is available now to any parent or guardian who has not already completed the form. We also have another link called Safe Schools Tip Line. We wanted to, we wanted to provide a way for members of the Orange community to report anonymous or non-anonymous tips in an effort to improve upon school safety. We will continue our partnership with our insurance vendor, Smart, excuse me, Smart Tech, to provide protection against cost incurred from damage, loss, or theft to a Chromebook. The cost is twenty-nine dollars per Chromebook, and coverage lasts for the duration of the school year. If any parent or guardian is interested in purchasing insurance, please contact the Technology Department by emailing techsupport@orange-ed.org to receive further information or to start the process. Over the summer, the Technology Services Department collected all twelve hundred and fifty student Chromebooks, checked them for damages, cleaned them, and put them back in the classrooms to be reassigned to students for the duration of the current school year. With the assistance of the board, Orange has been able to cycle out older model Chromebooks at a grade level or two each year to accommodate for system requirements for state testing as well as program software. To help streamline the configuration process, Technology Services has purchased GoBox. GoBox allows the Technology Department to configure sixteen Chromebooks at a time. Typically, to configure three hundred Chromebooks, it would take several technology specialists approximately two weeks. With GoBox, the Technology Services Department was able to configure all three hundred Chromebooks in two days. In fact, the hardest part of the project was unboxing the Chromebooks. This has proven to be time-saving and cost-efficient for the district. To date, the Technology Services has installed over one hundred wireless access points in many instructional spaces throughout the district. By installing these access points, we have increased the overall Wi-Fi connectivity for our students and staff. The school district provides monitoring for its camera, for its security cameras at each school. Additionally, school security staff also monitors security cameras. Technology Services continues to work to improve camera coverages as well as cycling out end-of-year, end-of-life, older-model cameras for state-of-the-art cameras that meet the district's security needs. Technology Services' mission is to provide service support and training. We'll provide new teachers with one-on-one training to show them how to use the technologies in their classrooms. For example, we'll train new staff how to print to the copiers, release documents, and scan emails. We'll also train teachers how to update their classroom page on the district website, as well as train them on how to use their interactive panels. Technology Services staff continues to train and educate our staff in all aspects of technology. School districts have become a target of cyber attacks such as ransomware phishing and malware attacks. In an effort to combat the threat of cyber attacks, Technology Services has begun training our staff to help recognize and avoid malicious cyber attacks. The training also educates staff on what steps to take if you believe you've been, you've received a suspicious email. One of the software used by the district that provides safety to our students is GoGuardian. This product protects our staff and students from inappropriate content and advertisement on websites and YouTube. Additionally, this program is capable of providing device recovery for those Chromebooks that get misplaced within the school year. We also have software named Bark that helps to monitor student content for specific words or phrases within documents or emails. Once detected, alert notifications are automatically sent to the principals for review for appropriate action. The software is in an effort to keep our students safe by staying ahead of cyberbullying and various other threats. A top layer of security is our Firewall appliance. This appliance runs software that blocks outside attackers from penetrating inside our network and causing damage. It, too, provides similar protection as GoGuardian, such as Firewall antivirus, that protects against the latest cyber attacks, viruses, spyware, and many other threats. Intrusion Prevention System, which examines network traffic flows and works to prevent exploits, and web content filtering, that goes even further than GoGuardian, protecting any device, any devices with any browser within the school district. The school district continues to use software such as Clever and ClassLink. Both serve as a repository for our approved online applications. The student simply holds a Quick Card badge in front of their Chromebook webcam. ClassLink software scans the badge and signs the student into the Chromebook, which then launches the ClassLink dashboard in a few seconds. Although ClassLink is used among all grade levels, the Quick Card badges are mostly used in grades pre-K through two, allowing, allowing for these primary-grade students to use modern technology for learning within their classrooms. The technology improves the amount of teaching time the teacher has throughout the school day. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Scarpetti, Dr. Russo, Mike Gray, and Mary Edo, and the rest of the administration for continuously supporting the Technology Services Department. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Armstrong? Go ahead, Liz.
You mentioned a Chromebook insurance that's available. Who would this be targeted towards? I have some kids in the lower elementary grades, but I don't know if this would be, like, necessary for them?
It, it's basically for any parent that wants it. If the child were to drop it and damage it, again, it would cover all the costs for damages to replace it or repair it.
We had, we had an issue where that has happened, and through parents' recommendation feedback we received, we started to look at a program such as this, and so we've offered it every year since then.
Okay, thank you.
Betty?
I guess I'm gonna follow up from Liz. Does that mean that if a Chromebook is damaged with a child dropping it or doing something, that the family is responsible for the repair and the costs? That's what you're saying? Yes?
Correct. If, without this insurance, they are responsible. There's times where our tech department kid fix it.
Yep.
Other times, it cannot.
Okay. And in addition, I was just wondering, I know at some point you mentioned that there were forms that could be filled out, and if people hadn't filled them out, they were available. Are parents, is there a notification system through this if parents are delinquent on some forms, or is that totally up to the parent? I didn't know if the technology was that sophisticated to alert parents that, you know, duh-duh-duh, you haven't turned something in.
I am gonna have to find out that and double-check.
Usually, usually the AAs cover that, Mrs. Hadlock, so, again, it's information that they have. As, as a reminder to the all board members, we created a PTAO council, and so we meet monthly, and that has been helpful for collaborating throughout, throughout the, all the schools, but it's also where we receive a lot of feedback. And there was conversations we had with regarding those forms, and so I guided Mr. Armstrong to not only share about updates that have occurred over the summer, but just a nice kind of nav, reminder of how parents that are watching at home to navigate these fields, and as a reminder to that. But usually, the AAs go over that.
Who goes over that?
The administrative assistants and office aides, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm using the acronyms we use in town.
Yeah, they would be, they would notify parents who were delinquent in forms? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Susan?
Mr. Armstrong, I want to thank you for your thorough manner in which you presented the materials, as well as how you shared it with us. I think for parents, they're really gonna appreciate it. You know, it's not, people say, oh, yeah, I know where it is, I know what it is, but they generally sometimes don't. So having that and the fact that it's recorded as well is really helpful, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Sorry for the nerves.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
You did great.
A follow-up to the insurance information. Is that something that parents would know about just from going on the website, or is that something that would be sent home? Just as a parent of a young child, I didn't know that was available for Chromebooks not being taken home, that it's offered also for the younger grades as an option for if, if the item is damaged in the classroom.
So it is on the website. I would have to check and see if the administrative assistants reach out to the parents and let them know that it's available.
Usually, in the beginning of the year, the school newsletters have that.
As well as the forms information.
And one other question regarding the Quick, I don't know, the Quick Access Card? Yes. Do those work at home as well?
Yeah, if, if they're on their Chromebook, yes, but.
So if it's not a Chromebook, so if, if a child uses that Quick Card for a home device, would it work on the home device? And I only ask because Quick Cards have been coming home with the parent, with, with the folders, and so I'm assuming that.
I would have to find out, but I, I would, I would want to double-check on that first, but if there is a camera on there and they go to the Family Resources link and click on Class Link,
Gotcha.
and they hold it in front of the camera, it should log them in.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
But I would want to double-check just to be sure. Yeah, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Carmen?
What's the relationship between this site and Power School? Are they separate, or do parents go to Power School and, and pop this up, or vice versa?
So the website will provide a link for the parents to log into Power School.
So they go here first?
They can go here first to Family Resources page, and let me just scroll back to that page. I'm sorry. Here. So if they go to Family Resources page and they click on the Power School portal link, it will take them to log into their Power School account where they can access all their forms.
And the Power School also has the language access?
The language access is up in the top right-hand, oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking about the, the language tool.
Yeah.
For, for Google?
Yes.
That's on the website in the upper-right-hand corner. So for, if they want to change the language to the website, that's just in the upper-right-hand corner of the page. Here.
And so that will align the Power School information to the language that they choose?
That will change the language for the website and follow through each page of the website. I would have to check, I would have to check for Power School to see how that aligns. I'm, I'm not sure they align together, but I will get back to you with that information.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Very nice job. We will move on to Superintendent's report. Dr. Scarpetti?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, and happy autumn to all the board members. It is that time of year when we conduct parent-teacher conferences. Tomorrow and Thursday have been designated as early release days to accommodate these meetings. Our teachers and staff have been diligently preparing and eagerly look forward to discussing their students' progress with parents. In addition, our crisis drills are in the process of completion with only one drill left to be conducted. Furthermore, we have two crisis team meetings remaining, which we anticipate will be finalized soon. I want to express my gratitude to the Orange Police Department and Fire Marshal's Office for their assistance in ensuring the safety of our students and staff during these drills. You might have seen on the website, if you had a keen eye, but our winter advisory letter has been shared with our school community through the newsletter, and it's been a pop-up page on our website. This letter will provide important information regarding potential school closures and delays due to inclement weather. As a friendly reminder, we do our best to coincide with BOA, Bethany, Orange, Woodbridge, and Amity, but sometimes we, that doesn't always coincide. So in other words, there may be times where we're able to get into school where our BOA district is, is not, and we make that decision, and vice versa. We may not be able to get into our schools, but they can, but we typically try to collaborate together most of the time. Our Halloween parties are in full celebration and are coming up. The Volunteer Fire Department will hold their haunted firehouse on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eight. It's nice to, like I've said many times before, these events offer students and staff an enjoyable opportunity to embrace the festive spirit, which we've missed in past years, and we're glad that we're back to where we were. Paper Shred Day, I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the Orange Recycling Committee and Rotary for their Paper Shred Day, which occurred two weeks ago. Started off somewhat dry and then got a little rainy, but we just want to thank their dedication to promoting sustainable practices with our community. On October sixth, we recently organized a Bus Driver Breakfast to express our gratitude to our dedicated transportation team for their role in safely transport, transport, transportating our students. Again, I want to thank the board members that were able to attend and showing their appreciation to all our owner-operators. We have initiated the budget process, and communication regarding budget matters has been sent to our school principals and directors. Additionally, we have received the town's request for the board's capital request, and we'll be discussing this matter with Mr. Cap during the next agenda session with our subcommittee. Here is where the, the long-range plan, which we've shared at the end of the year, but also in the beginning of the year with the subcommittee, truly comes in hand, and also in addition where Mr. Cap directed us to have our first meeting visiting the schools and the feedback we received from the sub- schools and the feedback we received from the subcommittee is gonna come to fruition with what is on that list. Mr. Cap, I'll be reaching out to you to schedule meetings so we could go over that. And looking ahead, we have begun crafting the 2024-2025 school calendar. As per our tradition, draft versions are first shared with our leadership team and the Orange Teachers League before they are presented to the board in November for review. The board will have a month to provide any recommendations before the final calendar is proposed and adopted in December. Another shout-out and thanks with gratitude is for the Lions Club. The Lions Clubs have started in our schools and continue to be in our schools conducting eye screening to all our students, which is a valuable service to, to our students. You know, speaking with Mrs. Hadlock, who's a volunteer, it's interesting to see what the screen actually catches and information we could provide to our parents in order to assist our students. And speaking with Mrs. Hadlock, you know, just because students were fine last year doesn't mean there may not be a challenge this year. So, Mrs. Hadlock, thank you for your time in our schools. I don't know if you wanna share anything with the committee at this time, or wait until, until the.
I'll give a brief, brief.
Okay.
I can tell you that I've been in Racebrook, Mariel Tracy School, the Hebrew Day School. Today, we were at Peck Place School, and we'll finish up tomorrow there. And on Wednesday, we'll be at Turkey Hill School. We've already screened over 500 students. And I can tell you that the nurses are very appreciative, the students are very cooperative, charming, and polite. It's our pleasure to provide this service for our schoolchildren. And routinely, we find about 10% of the students we screen are flagged for follow-up with an eye doctor. And those, that information is given to the school nurses to provide to parents.
We appreciate it, Mrs. Hadlock. And then I know Mr. Gray will, a moment as he's done, every board meeting, will update on the grants, but I'd like to announce that we have secured an additional competitive grant for math. This was offered to middle and secondary schools, and since we served six-rate students, we were able to apply, and we were awarded $142,000. This is to further and enhance the educational opportunities to our students to provide high dosage tutoring due to learning loss. Again, I'd like to extend thanks to Dr. Russo, who will also provide further information in a moment to our students. And in conclusion, I know, Mr. Crowe, you acknowledged Mr. Vitale, and, and Mr. Vitale, I appreciate your comments, but wanted to publicly thank you. Usually during Board Appreciate, Board Appreciation Month, I make the joke that there are some people out there that think all of you get paid for your service. I know one board member who left made a mention of that before she left, but we can't do it with people like you, all of you that are sitting at that table, so thank you. We know the amount of time it takes, as you mentioned, away from your family and other, other things that you could be attending to, but just our heartfelt gratitude for your service, Mr. Vitale, thank you. And that ends my report, Mr. Crowe.
Any questions for Dr. Scarpetti? Liz?
You mentioned in the impending bad weather, and I just had a question for the 21st Century students. What is the policy for the early dismissal and for the delayed openings? Can they still use 21st?
Usually when we cancel, they cancel.
What about in the event of like a delayed opening? Can, what, does it still open at the same time, or, or you're saying, you see what I'm saying?
Say, say for example, the most recent was, is when we did early release days for the hot weather temperatures. They also closed down too. So as an early release, I think it would just have to be a variation, I mean, a delay. So they would open earlier, but it would have to just be adjusted to that time. So I think they, they usually open at seven. So that's, so nine o'clock is the time that they would open on a delay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Dr. Scarpetti, I know this, I'm asking this question only because there has been inquiry, and I know that you would be able to answer it. As far as the minimum days for the parent-teacher conferences, is, is there a reason other than teachers having to prepare and obviously get ready for the, for the teach, for the parents, rather, to come in for their conferences, that there are the minimum days on those two days?
So, you know, I only could go historically, that typically that's a contractual piece too. So it's not only for preparation, but usually I know, since I was a teacher, it was a contractual piece too, in which if a teacher does a full day, a teacher actually is able to go and home or take care of their kids and then come back, and that's actually their full day of service that they would give. So that's what the reasons for those early release days.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question with that as well? Has anyone ever considered the, I know that if you are in 21st, you do have the ability to stay on early, on minimum days in their program, which is great, because we're in 21st in the morning, so on the minimum days, we can stay. But what about families who are not a part of 21st? Has there ever been any talk of having some sort of childcare on the, on those minimum days?
I think there is an opportunity, that a, a parent could actually select, and again, I could double-check with their director, Mrs. Lasso, but a parent doesn't have to stay the whole week, they could actually choose specific days. So I think that is an opportunity for them to use those days, but I could, I, I would wanna confirm that with Mrs. Lasso.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Dr. Scarpetti? Very well, thank you, Doctor. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Scarpetti said, I'll begin with an update on the grants. I'll begin with the American Rescue Plan Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant III. This was an allocation of $326,181. We are going to be heading into the second-to-last year of this grant, and we still have $96,861. To date, this money has been used for summer programming, the last couple of summers. There is also some money reserved for other issues that we could use it for, but this needs to be spent down by September 30th of next year. So we still have quite a bit of time with that money. We also have the American Rescue Plan Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief Innovative After-School Grant. This was a large grant that Dr. Russo secured last year. This is a $479,000 total grant. To date, we've spent $310,757 of that grant, and there's $168,341 remaining. This is for the 2023 and 24 after-school programming. Summer enrichment grant was a $299,986 grant. We split that almost exactly in half. $149,993, $993 was already expended, with the same amount still remaining. This is for 2023 and 2024 summer programming exclusively. We also have the ARPA Online Abuse Prevention Grant. This is the grant in which we are collaborating with the Orange Police Department and their SOAR program for programming with children. That is a grant of $30,000, because it is a grant this year, just starting out. It has not been expended at all yet. The ARPA Right to Read Grant also is a newer grant, $39,500. This is to help with assistance with the K-3 scientifically-based, evidence-based literacy teaching and learning. Again, because it's a new grant, we have not started to expend that yet. The ARPA Summer Mental Health Supports Grant is a $37,860 grant. This is for the delivery of mental health services to students during summer programming. Again, this will be used next summer, so it has not been expended at all yet. And finally, our ARPA School Mental Health Specialist Grant. This is a grant for $92,505. This grant is for hiring and maintaining school mental health specialists. This is a three-year grant, and you may recall, the first two years are at $92,505 to hire a mental health specialist. The third year will be at 75% of that, and then the fourth year, we would be responsible if we so chose to move forward with that. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we do have a new math grant. It's so new, it's not even on my update yet, so you'll probably be hearing about that next month. I know Dr. Russo is going to fill you in a bit about that. For food services, the Connecticut, sorry, I had a pop-up here. The state of Connecticut is distributing a fourth round of supply chain assistance funding. I've spoken about this previously, we've received three rounds so far. The school food, school food authorities electing to receive these funds must notify the CSDE of their intent to accept these funds by completing an opt-in survey, which we will be doing tomorrow. The Orange Public Schools have been slated to receive $27,169. As you'll recall, these funds are used to purchase unprocessed or minimally processed American-sourced food products for our school nutrition program. And as Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we are well into the budget season already. The collection sheets were sent out to our department heads at the end of last week, with a return date of October 31st. This information's going to be used to begin building our budget, and the next step in the process will be budget review meetings with each of the department heads and building administrators in early November. And that is the end of the finance portion.
Any questions for Mr. Gray on finance? Very well?
One, one clarification, Mrs. Edo just clarified, year three of that mental health grant is 70%, not 75%.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to your next report, Mr. Murray.
Sure. I hate to say it, but we've begun winter preparations. We recently had the annual maintenance and cleaning of our boilers, which were turned on this morning to begin the heating season. I hate to say that. There were no issues found during our inspections, our boilers are up and running, and we look forward to a smooth sailing winter season with our boilers. We'll also be getting our snowblower serviced in the, in the coming weeks for the upcoming season, and are also pre-ordering our ice melt in anticipation of winter weather. And again, finally, as Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we're getting ready for the annual capital planning process for developing a five-year plan of short-term projects for the schools. We look forward to meeting with the subcommittee soon to formulate the list of prioritized projects for this. And that concludes the facilities portion.
Any questions for Mr. Gray on facilities? Tatiana?
Mr. Gray, is there a set time that the heat goes on for the schools? What I mean by that is a set date, no matter what the weather is, or does it depend on the weather?
No, so it's usually right around the middle of October that we do that, when the evenings are getting pretty chilly, and the buildings do take a while to warm up, even though it becomes 60, 65 degrees in the afternoon. By the time it gets to that temperature, we're leaving the building, because the radiant heat just doesn't penetrate the building enough. So we do try to get them on in the middle of October or so. If we find that in the middle of October, it's still really warm and the classrooms aren't as cold, we will try to hold out as long as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Gray. Dr. Russo?
Good evening. Since Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Gray mentioned about the competitive high dosage math tutoring, I thought I'd start the curriculum report with that first. So some details include that we'll be targeting 71 6th grade students. These students will receive at least three times a week for 30-minute sessions to address gaps, to ameliorate those. We will also make sure that we offer to these students opportunities to partake in the innovative after-school tutoring program as well, from the innovative after-school grant, so that we can really attempt to ameliorate those gaps. Additional details for that grant will be shared with the members of the curriculum subcommittee meeting, but we're very excited about this opportunity, and we thank the State Department for it. Next, I'd like to share some information about our Professional Development Evaluation Committee, or PDEC. We had our first meeting, and we had an opportunity to review the sessions for November professional learning. We also had an opportunity to share information about a new initiative where paraprofessionals are included in PDEC. And finally, the first preparations for the new teacher evaluation system that has to be implemented next year. So current members do need to attend special state training sessions, and we have all registered for those. We have sessions in October, October, November, and January. Next, we did begin the Right to Read Series professional learning that the State Department of Education provided for districts, and so our team went and started the systems work for that. Also, we are so excited that all of our 3rd graders will be visiting the Brian Andrew House next week, and they'll have an opportunity to learn how to make butter, candles, and yarn. And so they'll have an opportunity to experience what life was like in Orange during the 1740s in the context of a home furnished from that time period. And finally, in September, we did share with parents of 3rd and 5th graders and the parents of 4th and 6th graders who are new to Orange, that next week, students will be engaging in the COGAT assessments, or cognitive abilities tests. These measure verbal, quantitative, and non-verbal experiences with problem solving. And while they don't measure things like effort, attention, motivation, or work habits, this assessment can provide a rich source of information about the best ways for us to support learning. Students are scheduled to take a practice test prior to the administration of these actual assessments, and these practice tests will be sent home so parents can see what they're like. There's no formal preparation necessary for the COGATs, just a good night's sleep, a good breakfast, and that's really it. And of course, if anybody has any questions about those assessments, they can contact building principals. And that concludes my report.
Susan?
Thank you, Dr. Russo. One question about that last test that the students will be taking, those are, I'm assuming they'll be done online, or are they done paper-based?
Actually, old-fashioned paper pencil.
Whatever works.
Carmen?
The intervention program for the, you said 71?
The intervention program, you said there were 71 6th grade students? Okay. Who is responsible for providing that half-hour of intervention?
Math aids that we have trained, also math specialists and teachers.
So the half-hour intervention is for math, not literacy?
Correct.
Okay. But did we not say that there was grant monies that were gonna fund programs for math? So is there any way that some of these students can upload an app after school and they can kind of practice on their own, or is that something that we're going to offer the same 71 students after school?
So the, one of the reasons why we were awarded the grant was that we are going to provide in-person, because the research is showing that the in-person is the most effective. But in addition to providing the in-person instruction, we are going to create learning plans so that they'll also be individualized for the students. And whatever we identify as like prerequisite skills, or those skills that the students need to address in order to ameliorate their gaps, we will identify that target for the student, and we will also provide additional resources that they could practice on their own. We will provide choice for that, and then have a, an opportunity or a task that will demonstrate that they have mastered that target, and then they can be empowered to share their progress with their parents, in addition to teachers sharing with the parents the progress. So the after-school tutoring is provided by a person, the in-school tutoring is provided by a person, but there will be additional resources for students to engage with and document their learning and their progress to kind of bring the whole thing home. And we expect from engaging in these practices to really show the growth that's necessary for smarter balance, and not just smarter balance, but district performance as well.
Before I let you go, can you just, for the purposes of the public, COGATs?
Cognitive Abilities Test. And just to be a little more specific, it's an assessment that measures three areas of learned reasoning and problem-solving skills. Verbal reasoning, such as vocabulary and word usage, quantitative reasoning, such as mathematical concepts, and non-verbal reasoning, such as visual and spatial shapes and figures. non-verbal reasoning, such as visual and spatial shapes and figures.
So, does that take the place of one of the state tests?
No.
So, this is Orange giving this test?
Yes, in addition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah, Betty.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Russo. I just wanted to clarify something. I know you were talking about the new evaluation tool for teachers. That's for all teachers. It's not a new teacher evaluation. It's a new evaluation for all teachers.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Tatiana.
Dr. Russo, the 71 students that you referenced, how were they selected, or was it a, was it a selection process or a volunteer basis?
So, based on triangulating data from Smarter Balance Assessment Performance and our own district assessments, that's how we identified the students who would benefit. And then now, because we just received this, we were just awarded this grant, we will contact the families of those students.
And is it, they can participate or not participate, or is it a, I guess it wouldn't be a mandatory participation?
You know, we haven't, we didn't really think about that part yet. We still have to have some more discussions. We would hope that families would accept the invitation, but like anything, you can't force anybody to do anything, so we hope to make it so inviting that students will want to accept the invitation and recognize how it will, it will help them achieve their goals.
Thank you.
Just one more question about that math grant. Why were the 6th, why was the 6th-grade class targeted rather than like an earlier intervention?
That was the state criteria.
So, this grant is, again, this was for middle school and secondary high school, only because we have 6th grade. 6th grade is considered middle school. And so, that's why we applied. Some board members even reached out to me about, would we apply, would we be considered for this? And again, the specificity of this is learning loss. They didn't say because of the pandemic, but that's the inference that I received was because of this, and so those are the students that are going to be focused on.
Anyone else? Very well, thank you, Dr. Russo. Mrs. Edo?
Good evening. I have a very brief update. The Connecticut State Department of Ed reported that the parent portal within the Connecticut Special Education Data System, or CTSEDS, is now available for use. So, the student's special education providers will begin to communicate directly with families regarding access to the portal, and with fingers crossed, we will successfully roll out the parent portal of CTSEDS. And that concludes my report. And I also would like to thank Mr. Simon for his service. Vitale, sorry. Ken, yeah, Ken. Thank you.
Mrs. Edo, I just want to say good luck.
Betty?
I was wondering, when this is rolled out and it's all going smoothly, will this also be a link on our website?
Great question.
Like another parent portal, so to speak?
That's a really good question. The parents get a personal invitation, an email directly to their personal login, but that's, that is something we can explore, because they can still go to the portal and then put their personal information in there. So, it's a great question and something we can look into.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Mrs. Edo? Very well, thank you. All right, moving on to board business. Policy second read, Orange Board of Ed Policy 3240, tuition fees. Do I have a motion to accept policy 3240 tuition fees as presented? Betty, second. Susan, any discussion on this policy? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very good. Second read, Orange Board of Education Policy 4214, personnel non-certified assignment and transfer. Do I have a motion to accept policy 4214, personnel non-certified assignment and transfer as presented? Mr. Vitale? Carmen, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Second read, Orange Board of Ed Policy 4215, personnel non-certified supervision and evaluation. Do I have a motion to accept policy 4215, personnel non-certified supervision and evaluation? Tatiana? Susan? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Second read, Orange Board of Ed Policy 4218, personnel non-certified dismissal suspension. Do I have a motion to accept policy 4218, personnel non-certified dismissal suspension as presented? Tatiana, second. Betty, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, moving on to policy first reads. As always, these are presented this evening. We will, looking to take action on them in the November meeting. Any questions, please contact Betty, myself, or Dr. Scarpetti in the coming weeks, okay? Board of Ed Policy, Orange Board of Ed Policy 4121, substitute teacher. Orange Board of Ed Policy 6141.322, computers, websites, pages. Orange Board of Education Policy 6162.6, copyright law compliance. Orange Board of Ed Policy 6164.4, identification of special needs and abilities. Moving on to standing committees. Ms. Riccio?
The finance subcommittee met prior to this meeting. We reviewed the financials. Everything is in order. There are certain things that are a little bit higher, certain things are a little bit lower. Right now, everything is going according to plan. We're still well within budget. The cafeteria numbers all looked good for parents. I hope that they take advantage of our cafeteria. They do a great job. We went over the grants, as has already been discussed with the full board, and that's about it.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? Very well. Personnel Policy Transportation, Mrs. Hadlow?
The Personnel Policy and Transportation Committee met on October 2nd. We discussed and reviewed the current first-read policies. Recommendations for updates and language changes have been noted. Please reach out to me, or Mr. Crowder, Dr. Scarpetti, for any needed clarification before our November meeting. I anticipate that we will meet again before the next meeting, probably on the last Monday of the month, as has been our practice. But that's not set in stone. I need to talk to Mr. Simon and Mr. Cap, I guess, about that, but that would be my guess. That would be October 30th.
Very good. Any questions for Betty? Susan? No. Okay, thank you. Who do we have here? Buildings and Grounds, Safety and Security, Mr. Cap?
I don't have any additional updates than what Mr. Gray has already reported tonight, but we will be scheduling a meeting, maybe on that Monday. So, I'll keep the committee in touch with that.
Any questions for Mr. Cap? Very well. Curriculum? Oh, our TV ratings are going to go down. Mr. Simon's not here. So, we'll have to speak with Mr. Simon next meeting. Susan, ACIS?
So, the ACIS Governing Board met this past Thursday, October 12th, in Hamden. We have three major projects going on. One is their Wintergreen Inter-District Magnet School, which is back at Wintergreen School. That project is going very well. Our architect presented the final plans for what we're actually going to be doing. They'll need to be approved by the state. So, that was a big deal. We got through everything, all of the compliance stuff we needed to. We also discussed our executive director's goals for the 2023-24 school year. We had a few policies, one being chest-feeding, and the other one was affirmative action. We have a tentative agreement with our behavior technicians. We have two additional construction projects. One is for ACIS at Chase, and the other one is for 88 Basset Road, which will, ACIS at Chase is a magnet school. The 88 Basset Road will be a special ed school. Our financials are all in order. We are currently operating at a surplus. We hold our breath on that, because that can roller-coaster for us. So, right now, it's doing very well. Our budgeting process has also started. Human Capital, they hired 35 new people. They had a road show to make sure all of those people knew what they were doing, as well as all the benefits. HR has been going out to make sure that people know that they have a voice in HR, and they have a lot of wellness activities going on. We have an early head start that's also doing well. There's, was a core knowledge report about curriculum and some additional information. There's a lot going on at the schools. There's lots of Halloween items. There's lots of back-to-school things. There's a gala coming, the ACIS Gala's coming up in March. I'll give you more information when I have the card on it. And I think that's about it for ACIS.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? Betty?
Susan, the Basset Road, that's the North Ave and the Old Gateway campus, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, it was the same place I was thinking of.
You are. It originally was built, and it's actually a fun thing, is that we received pictures during the meeting yesterday, Thursday. 88 Basset Road was originally created as a middle school, and they did a time capsule when they opened it.
Oh.
Right, when they opened the school in '64, they put everything in, who was getting, signing the paper, and what's, was kind of funny. And one of the people who was speaking was standing at the podium with his hand back like this, because he had a cigarette in his hand. But it was a middle school, and then it was the Old Gateway. And Gateway is still there. There's, the automotive is still at one end, segregated from the students. There's a hard, you know, since wall between them, so they would not be intermingling. That 88 Basset Road, which is where Gateway was, will go a fairly extensive overhaul. It's going to be a two-year cycle. The first part will be the beginning, the foyer, the entryway, adjustments so the buses can get in, smaller buses as well as larger buses. They'll also have to configure some of the space, because it was college classrooms, and these will be for younger children and children with special needs. So, there's a little bit more space needed for nursing as well.
And I did drive by Wintergreen Magnet School in the past 10 days, and it looks fantastic from the outside, so it looks like that's, as you said, just about complete, so.
Well, we're doing a lot more things with the outside things, and the things to first, to just get in first. That was our first step to get them in. It does look great. Thank you for saying that. But we're doing a bunch of things with the kitchen, as well as some of the classrooms needed overhaul. Carmen?
Is the Basset School site also magnet, or is it just?
It's a special school.
Right, but how do?
It's a special ed school.
So, how do people access? They, is it a magnet school, or?
No, they'd have to be placed into one of our special ed schools. It could be somebody who has autism, somebody who has special needs, and they get.
So, who places them? Do, do parents, or do school systems?
They're from, every, all the districts can send children to those schools if they so desire. So, they're placed in there, yes.
So, it's for outplacement?
Yeah.
Purposes?
Thank you.
Anyone else for Susan? Very good. A couple of things before we adjourn. Correct me if I'm wrong. On November 7th, I think that's the first Tuesday of November, correct? There's a town-wide election. I would encourage everyone to get out and vote. I believe the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00, 8:00 PM, and it will be at High Plains Community Center. I would like to thank, on behalf of the board, Mr. Vitale for his service. Feel free to come back and visit us anytime. We always like to see former board members. And I'm going to ask Mr. Vitale to make the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you. Susan will second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? We are adjourned at 8:01. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.